Hannah Lee, we are going to start, welcome to study session July 1st, everyone. So, we're in a new month and it's going to be cooling down, so we have that to look forward to, and we have a long weekend. So, all in all, we're doing great, batting a thousand. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start with the Housing Action Plan first. And, Maureen, do you want to kick it off just by introducing some of the background and what you were hoping to achieve and some of the takeaways that we should be looking for when we discuss this?
Absolutely. We have a presentation.
Okay.
And I know we've talked about this a bit, so, but I do just want to go over it because the study session that we did in February, you know, obviously since then we've had the draft plan out, so want to make sure that we're just providing the time to touch on the priorities.
One second.
Let me move my video over here. Okay. So, yeah, so I'll give an update on the process and as I share just a brief overview of the draft plan, and then happy to discuss any questions, and then as you all think about next steps and implementation, anything that you want to discuss further. So, we have the Draft Housing Action Plan and it's intended to provide policy guidance to better meet Spokane's current and future housing needs. And the purpose is to provide greater housing diversity, affordability, and access to opportunities for residents of all income levels. We have the draft plan available on our project page at the URL on this website. The project page also has all the materials and documents from the last year-plus, so there's a lot of information on there and certainly encourage people to jump in if they would like to. And there are also a number of key components throughout the process that are included as appendices, and these provide more background data and insights into key deliverables that we've talked about, many of them throughout the process, but just highlight with that we have our housing needs assessment and additional data analysis that helps us understand the community and range of housing needs. We've also reviewed our local housing policy to understand guidance for housing and identify gaps. We have done a lot of community engagement throughout the process, and we have a summary of our outreach activities and what we learned through that, as well as our displacement risk assessment, which is a starting point for the city to help identify the community's risk factors related to displacement. And again, all of these are available to download on our project page. And we just want to be clear that throughout this process, there is absolutely a need and a growing need for housing. We know that the housing supply shortages are being seen throughout the country as a whole, as well as here in Spokane and across the state. The housing need assessment does show a need for housing using the same methodology for forecasted need as statewide reports. The Washington Center for Real Estate Research, which tracks the housing market, shows a need for housing in Spokane. And we also have a lot of local and regional data that we talked about and that our stakeholders have shared that shows there is a short supply of housing for sale right now and has been over the last year, as well as ongoing very low rental vacancy rates. Our community surveys have indicated needs as well as market challenges for individuals, and our stakeholders have stated that throughout this process, all types of housing are needed at different prices and different types of housing. We also know there are many different factors to the housing market. I know I've said this before, but it's always just a good framework to come back to that in the Housing Action Plan, we specifically looked at what the city can do to influence and encourage the development of affordable and market rate housing. And the Washington Department of Commerce in particular has outlined four areas that local governments have direct influence on. So, that's the development regulations, which helps us manage the design and characteristics of new housing, development incentives and infrastructure to promote investment in housing types in different areas, financial assistance through direct funding support, and also just programmatic support for residents and services for the community. So, the Housing Action Plan provides guidance for the city to, as I shared, better meet our current and future housing needs. There's a spectrum of ideas in there, and that is intentional to help provide a range of shorter-term actions like code changes, longer-term actions like comp plan revisions, as well as programmatic and communication actions. And these strategies and actions were identified through feedback from stakeholders and the community, a review of our housing policies, looking at trends and best practices, and then guidance from the Washington Department of Commerce. And the strategies identified in the Housing Action Plan are recommendations, so if each action is undertaken, it will be subject to its own public process of review and adoption. And all of this taken together helps to inform a plan of action which can guide, act as a guidance to bridge the gap between the on-the-ground conditions and updated vision for the community. And as expected, there's no single strategy that will resolve all the housing affordability challenges, so they are meant to be interrelated to address different facets of housing needs. And as I shared, we have talked about the priorities back in February and over the last couple of months, so I am going to keep this at a higher level, but I do want to click through at least just the strategies. I won't talk about all of them, but just wanted to give the time here to at least bring these up and have them here since we haven't gone through them since before the draft was prepared. And I do want to at least draw attention to a few focus areas that have been coming up that I think will be of particular interest. So, priority A, the strategy looks, this priority looks at strategies to support the availability of housing options and encourage that construction of both affordable and market rate housing. And there is a focus on missing middle housing types, which include duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts. It also looks at the need for affordable housing for people and families of all income levels, both in the rental and homeownership markets. The strategies focus on increasing housing options, zoning and land use changes, process improvements for permitting, as well as some other topics that the city has been discussing recently, like accessory dwelling units. And so, A1 in particular, the strategy A1 is trying to address housing types and development regulations, and it's organized by potential actions for single-family residential areas as well as potential actions for all residential areas. And this is where we see some differentiation between code changes, which would be considered shorter term, and actions that would require changes to the comp plan, which would be considered more longer term. So, there is a spectrum of ideas in there from things like allowing duplexes on each parcel or corner lot, which could be done through code changes, as well as if we wanted, if the city wanted to look at increasing housing options to triplexes or higher in certain areas, that would require longer-term changes to the comprehensive plan. So, again, the spectrum of ideas in there is to provide sort of shorter-term ideas as well as longer-term ideas, and then allow you all to kind of identify the priority, given resources, staffing, investment, things like that. So, priority B, this highlights the connections between housing affordability and quality, something that we've heard a lot throughout the process, not just building new housing, but preserving our existing housing and supporting residents wherever they're living in the city and either rental or homeownership. So, a lot of these are focusing on preventative and proactive code enforcement. We've been working closely with code enforcement throughout this process and getting ideas from them on how they see that they can better support housing, support for tenants and property managers, as well as the preservation of existing housing, as I shared. Priority C, this is focusing on the historic context that has contributed to patterns of inequity and is really trying to encourage the city to break down barriers to accessing housing. So, not just are we building housing, but how are people able to access it, and are they actually able to get into the housing that meets their needs? And then also ways to move people into homeownership if desired. So, a lot of stakeholders from all different perspectives have discussed the importance of equity as a key foundation for housing policies. So, this is reflected throughout this priority in particular, as well as in many of the other strategies and the other priorities as well. And also it looks at continuing to expand the displacement risk assessment. That was kind of a first starting point of analysis, but how can we deepen our understanding on the causes of displacement and then further consider that in policy decision. And then our last priority, priority D, this is recognizing that the city is part of a regional housing market. We've also talked about this quite a bit, and, you know, an understanding that housing challenges cannot be solved by the city alone. So, how can we further encourage local and regional partnerships, participate in those partnerships that will help us tackle the full scale of housing challenges?
So, I'm on the phone.
So, just a few strategies there. And then, continuing on with our process, the, in early June, the Plan Commission voted to recommend the Housing Action Plan, move forward to city council for consideration of adoption by resolution, and they did make an amendment, as shown here. So, they're recommending forming a joint Plan Commission, city council-led task force that will conduct a review of all residential focused zones and help develop a set of actions that could include both those comp plan revisions, which would be slightly longer term, and then the development code changes, which would be quicker. And then, just wanted to kind of look towards the next steps. I know that there's some implementation discussion that might all want to get to today, but just kind of acknowledging that there's been a lot of housing initiatives over a number of years, and Housing Action Plan has provided an opportunity to further focus that attention. But certainly, the details and, you know, a lot of those kind of priority emphasis will come in the next phase, and I think everyone is eager to get to there, if not when this process started, certainly by now. So, next steps to further identify the priorities from city council, as well as mayor's office, Plan Commission, and then also do ongoing monitoring and evaluation to keep our data up to date and reflect our progress as we, as we go through the process. And I did just want to show again our process for adoption. So, we have been going through. We completed the Plan Commission process with workshops, online open house, and a public hearing. These are recorded and have been uploaded onto the project page. So, now we are going through, we had a briefing at the beginning of June, and then this one, and hopefully move on to the next steps if you all feel that that is appropriate at this time. And then, we are accepting public comments continually throughout the process, either by email, SpokaneHousingPlan@spokanecity.org, as well as the opportunity for public testimony at any public hearing that we have scheduled. So, that's my quick overview, and certainly we have staff here today to help answer questions or listen in to your discussion.
Thank you, Maureen. That was really good. We have Betsy on the phone, Councilmember Wilkerson, and Council President also on the phone. And Council President, I don't know if you want to start off with the discussion with your points and go through your list. So, tell us what you'd like to do.
I am just showing up. So, if you give me two minutes, maybe we can go to Councilmember Wilkerson, and then I'll go on camera.
Okay. And I think what I'll do before we do, is Councilmember Wilkerson, can you hear me? Okay. So, let's go to our people that I actually can see. Anybody have questions or, hi Kate, questions or areas of discussion they'd like to explore? Councilmember Cathcart, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I've brought this up before. I just think we need to address the needs assessment and just make sure that that's a little bit more robust and I think accurate in terms of what the broad need is in the community, just because I think that while we might all sort of inherently agree that it's underestimating the numbers, I think future councils could look at that and say, well, that's what the need is, so that's what the need is, so we don't need to make any, any sort of changes to land use or housing policies. So, I think that that's, that's the, in terms of this report, I think that's probably the biggest thing that needs to be looked at. And then there's a number of recommendations I think we could include, and I think the Council President's probably going to address some of those, but, you know, we can do that either by including them in the Housing Action Plan, or we can do that separately, you know, in a separate resolution that would be kind of a priority list, which I think is perhaps the direction that's been discussed so far. But one thing, I'll just bring it up, that I'm very interested in, that could be a way to move a little bit quicker on a bold change, would be to enact some sort of an emergency interim control, which state law allows us to do, to allow for up to four attached units in single-family zoned areas. And we could do that right away. That's something council could enact. And so, I think that that's something that we should look at, you know, perhaps along with any sort of a declaration of emergency so that the public understands that, yes, we are prepared to take bold action to address the housing crisis. So, I would just put that out there. Would love to have more conversations on that. But, yeah, I think the thing within the report itself is addressing that needs assessment.
Can I respond to that, Councilmember Cathcart? Because, Maureen, you gave us all a very good explanation of what that entails. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? And then I'm going to turn it on to Council President to finish this up.
Yeah, so elaborate a little bit more on the needs assessment question. So, you're, sure. Yeah, so we, I guess a couple of things to kind of consider. So, the methodology is the same as statewide reports, as I, as I shared. And this is really the first time we've looked at underproduction, and it's a new sort of form of analysis that the state is looking at through these Housing Action Plan processes. So, absolutely, we can continue to monitor and analyze it going forward. The city's numbers are part, they're not in conflict with any of the broader numbers from the county. They are part of that. And so, if we're thinking about, again, the city as part of the larger regional housing market and, you know, how, what is our focus within the city and how does that relate to the county? So, you know, we feel pretty confident that the methodology is there, is sound. Our, the consultant that we worked with has also done the same analysis with other cities and counties, and just sort of acknowledging that those numbers are, are part of that and not in conflict with. And then also, there is, you know, some data timelines that are different. Geography and time scale are always very important. So, are we talking about the city or the county? And then, the housing needs assessment does use 2018-based data, and some other more recent reports might use 2019 data. So, it's not a huge issue, but just acknowledging that there might be some small differences there. And there certainly has been rapid growth over the last couple of years. And so, again, acknowledging that using the base data will help us look at long-term trends, so we can continue the ongoing monitoring and analysis going forward to count for that rapid growth and make sure that we're staying current with the data that's out there. So, I don't know if Carol or Louis, if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, the numbers in the report reflect going out to 2037, and so they're more of a 20-year number, and those will be reexamined as a part of the comprehensive plan and the urban growth area discussions here in just a couple of years. And so, I think then the numbers may adjust at that point in time to reflect a new 20-year window. But the current numbers reflect the city's allocation that Spokane County and the steering committee of elected officials assigned to the city back in, I believe, 2017. So, we have had more recent growth than probably what that longer-term trend is, but that trend will be evaluated, like I said, with the urban growth area update process in a couple of years.
Council President, did you want to take over?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take over. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kinnear, for filling in for me. And I bring you all greetings from Senator Maria Cantwell. She was here today for the kickoff of the Gonzaga Family Haven Project over on Hamilton, Nevada, and Foothills Boulevard. Literally hundreds of amazing units for people who were formerly homeless, families who have gone through the Catholic Charities Rising Strong Program, gotten mental health and addiction treatment. They have kids. There are parks there. There are wraparound services provided by Gonzaga University. It's just an amazing partnership. And Senator Cantwell was here and sends her greetings. She so appreciates the city's participation. You might recall council that we agreed to sell a kind of ugly gravel parking lot right on that plot of land for well below market price so that they could afford to put this project together. We also vacated streets and right-ofways and did zoning changes under short timeframes, all to make that work. And Catholic Charities is thankful. And frankly, there was a family there speaking who are going to be moving into the place, and they are so, a husband and wife and three kids who are both back in college, the parents. It's just amazing. But one of the things Senator Cantwell was going around the state highlighting is that she has introduced a bipartisan bill called the 2021 Affordable Housing Act that would increase tax credit financing for the next two years by 50%, and then permanently have it higher going forward. And that would essentially, we get about one to two projects a year in Spokane. That increase would get us another project a year probably, of permanent, high-quality housing that just changes things and creates tons of jobs as well. So, I'm sorry that I was delayed, but I felt it was important to be there and represent us and hear back from the senator. So, thanks for that interlude. And with that, I see Councilmember Stratton had her hand up. Go ahead, Karen.
So, I think this is a simple question. As we go through this and listen to the comments on the, you know, overall recommendations and the process, what keeps coming back to me is the, the idea that there are, there appears to be parts of the community who are in disagreement with the numbers and the data. And I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I'm just saying. I've had calls saying this isn't the data that should be used. It's old, whatever. So, I guess my question is, if, as we start out on this and we start looking at recommendations and then getting specific into what the priorities are and what we want to see, is it in everybody's best interest to have a, I don't know if it's a study session or something with those groups that are, seem to be a little bit in disagreement of the data and the numbers? Is that worth a conversation that hopefully we could get everybody to understand and move forward together on this?
I think we can definitely-
Because every time we talk about it, it goes back to, I get, I hear different on the data. So, I don't know if it's worth a deeper discussion.
Well, I think it's totally worth a deeper discussion because we should just hear the more data. My, my understanding, I think part of the challenge on this is that this was a grant that the administration of the city got, and it has certain parameters and calculations on how you have to do stuff. And essentially, if my understanding, Councilmember Kinnear and I got to meet with a consultant who came up with the numbers yesterday, and one of the things, he's the same consultant that the home builders hired to do theirs. But the, the formula that he was asked to use, as Louis explained, has really to do with the Growth Management Act formula, which has nothing to do with the current market conditions, as far as I can tell. It's completely apples and oranges. And so, what I'm hearing from people is like, the numbers in this report don't reflect the current market conditions at all. They just, they just don't. But what I found out from talking to the consultant is they were never intended to. They're really not for that purpose. They're much longer-term, broader. And so, I, just my approach is the numbers in the report say what they are, but they do not have to inform us as to what we do and what's important. And to Michael's comment that the fear that five years from now, another council will look at this report and say, hey, these numbers aren't very drastic. We don't have to do much. I think your idea of having a study session and incorporating our best sense, maybe not the specific numbers, but our best sense of the problem and the situation in current market conditions into our response, I think that's a great idea. And I've been encouraging people like the realtors and the home builders is, you know, don't spend too much time on the fact that they used a different data strategy on this. Let's spend the time on figuring out what we need to do. Because we all know that, I don't think there's anyone that says we don't have to do something pretty urgently. So, that's my thing. And just to transition slightly to the document that I sent out, you know, I met with-
But I would do, I would just end my comments with, I really feel that it would be great to start this process and continue these discussions with those entities around the table, the home builders, the realtors, city staff, city council. Let's just sit down and flush this out so people can walk away. Whether they disagree or not, they've got the information that we're using and why we're using it and how we're going to move forward. we're going to move forward. And we can get over that, that first, or what I see as that first hump in this.
So I, yeah, what, I might not have said it as clearly as I meant to, but I agree with you. We should have that meeting. So we should do that in the next few weeks. We're set schedule-wise, whatever we're going to do around this report and any response for Monday, July 26th. So that gives us from now until then to have that meeting. And I 100% agree, if for no other reason, for people who care deeply and have lots of subject matter expertise and various perspectives, they can at least feel that we heard them. Because I, when I see the press releases, I feel a little strange, like, well, you're not, you're kind of, you're not really directing it to the people that are having an impact on what that report is. And we do want to hear it. But I'd much rather hear it in a conversation around a table than in a press release. So we'll get, we'll get something scheduled. And not sure what that looks yet, but that's totally, so.
Uh, Council President?
Yep.
I think Councilmember Wilkerson had her hand up. She's on the phone.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wilkerson, we're unmuting you.
Can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
Oh, thank you. It's weird being on this end of the phone instead of in person. So I have heard the challenges that Councilmember Stratton expressed around data, and I've heard people willing to fall on the sword for these numbers. And so my question is, with this report, how frequently can these numbers be changed? Or these numbers that we are discussing, are they in stone until the next report comes? Or could they be adjusted in two to three years? That was what I never understood.
Uh, Maron or someone from planning?
Yeah, the Spokane County as a whole is set to reexamine the population forecast for the county, along with the allocation process to all the jurisdictions within the county. And I believe that's in no later than, is it 2025, Carol? We've got it-
The 2026 is the, is the date that the county and every city within Spokane County updates the comprehensive plan. And usually, a year or two before that, so it'd be '24 or '25, the Steering Committee of elected officials and the Planning Technical Advisory Committee meet and work on those numbers and how much is allocated. It generally sort of follows trend lines. Sorry, I saw the misread. But that's when that occurs. And I can also, I'll just share that as part of the whole House bill that created this, there is a component for a housing supply and affordability report on an annual basis through the Washington Center for Real Estate Research. And so the first, that first report just came out last fall. So there will be an annual one each year, 2021, 2022, 2024, and every two years thereafter to really look at housing supply and affordability metrics across the state and jurisdictions. So we will also have that. That was not part of the conversation previously. Again, that first report was just last, this last fall. So that will also help us going forward and kind of give us more of a ready tool as well. And can I add that also will give us a comparison? And that's why the state's interested in it, too, is they can compare how different cities are performing with providing housing. So.
Anything else?
Yeah, the city, into these numbers occurs through the Steering Committee of elected officials. And the office, the State Office of Financial Management gives the county a range, a 20-year look and a range of population for the county to make a determination of, within that range, what their target's going to be. And within that, we compare that with capacity of the jurisdictions, and that helps to size urban growth boundary. The county commissioners are the actual final decision-makers on how that allocation occurs. And they made that decision last in 2017 based on a recommendation from the Steering Committee of elected officials. Our grant from the state has tied us into those numbers that were assigned to the city of Spokane. So that's what's driving that report.
Councilmember Wilkerson? I don't know if that fully answered all your concerns, but is there any other follow-up that you have?
No, clear as mud. But I hear room for opportunities for adjustments as we go forward and that we have a baseline.
Yeah, and I would just say, I've been on the committee that does those numbers. I don't think I was part of doing the numbers. Maybe I was right at the beginning, I don't remember. But it's a very political process because what your numbers are, then that determines whether or not the urban growth boundaries get extended. So I found it just personally not that connected to reality. It just hasn't, it's a very political process. And I think what our advocates in the community that are really taking issue with the numbers in this report is they just see it so disconnected from reality on the ground. And I, I agree with them. And I don't, I don't, I don't know how to solve that because we're using parameters that are set out for us that we have to do. Staff has done that. And I don't think there was a misanalysis using the parameters. There could be more recent data, but it's just a different purpose. It's for long-term planning and I just, this is just me, in my mind, it doesn't reflect actual on-the-ground conditions right now. We are not, but the point I want to make is that whatever actions we take, we're not bound by the data or the numbers in that report. It's just, it's just to inform us, one way of looking at it. So how deeply we want to go towards reform is not limited in any way by that. So we can do, so whatever we each individually think the supply is, that can inform us. But I do think it's a great idea to have a public session with people so we can hear all the different, different methods of determining what the housing supply is. Because essentially, each group that has a different answer, they have a different methodology. And if we hear all of them, I think that will help us. And again, people will feel heard. So I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Stratton, we'll, we'll get working on that. The other thing I wanted to bring out, I circulated a document for today's meeting, and I just wanted to give you some background on that. I had sent emails to each of you, and I think I was able to meet with everybody except Councilmember Burke, about just some ideas that, based on what everyone had been saying. And so kind of got feedback from that. And then based on that feedback, I put this together as a, as a draft of a potential kind of response from council to the report. Staff, you know, has been working for the mayor on this, and they've been in close consultation with us. I really appreciate, they've met with council members who wanted to hear about it. And so we, we've kind of known what's going on. But in terms of the format and how they presented it, they came up with a way that seemed best to them. And the way I describe it to people is that they have tried to frame the problem in a way that you can get your hands, your arms around. And then they've listed lots of strategies, but with, which is very helpful that we can pull from. But they did not make any recommendations over, we should do this strategy first or this strategy second, and there's no budget authority. So what I thought it was missing was an actual action implementation plan. And so this document that I sent out, which is just mine, it is informed by talking with most of you, but it's just mine. But I'm hoping that we will amend the housing action plan and add an implementation and budget plan to it on the 26th. And so that's, I think if it had an implementation plan and a budget, which this does have a budget going forward for next year, I think that will give some sense of security to other people that we are actually going to move ahead as opposed to just starting the process. So that's what the intent of this is. Again, this is just language that I came up with, and I'm looking forward to conversation today and over the next few weeks to see if we can get something that we agree on that when we pass a resolution that accepts the housing action report from the administration, that we will also be able to add this, or not this one, but something like this to it. So that's, that's the frame. Councilmember Canir?
Thank you. Two things. One, we passed an infill ordinance a couple of years ago. It would be helpful to know what already exists versus, so comparing what you're suggesting, Council President, and what already exists, so we're not duplicating efforts, that's the first thing. So it'd be nice if somebody could go through that, maybe from our staff, and just say, no, we got this already, we have this already. Some of those infill development incentive, in the ordinance are not being used right now for whatever reason, and we should identify what those are. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I have been working with Jacoby and Alex and Melissa and Shawna on development incentives, and we're very close to finalizing something in the next few weeks. I'd like to bring that forward in tandem with this, so that not only do we have this plan, but we have the development incentives that will go along with it.
Yep. I, I 100% agree, and I'm sure if you, I know it's a bit of a dense document, but I included all those incentives that you had in this, and I, except for one-
Came up with the car, so we have even more.
Yeah, well, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I really wanted to do that. So we'll, and again, this is a, this is a living document currently. And again, I think it reflects a majority of council based on my conversations, but we've only had those conversations one-on-one. So we're going to need to schedule a more group kind of discussion over these things. But it's exactly meant to pull that together. And as far as coming up with a comparison document, yeah, I will work with Shawna on that and potentially with administration staff if they're allowed to work with us on it. That's sometimes an issue, they got a lot, a lot going on. I, I think that's exactly the thing. And the thing about the infill incentives that we did pass a few years ago is they were not combined with the financial incentives that you're working on. So that is my, my takeaway. I mean, I thought those infill amendments were great, and I'm disappointed that they haven't been used. But in thinking about it, you and I have discussed that, yeah, we got to sort of put our money where our mouth is and to really focus. And I think if we do that, we can really activate those centers and corridors. Some people have wanted to do the it's all or nothing on centers and corridors. And I think what the road we're on now is activating the centers and corridors, is it's not an either-or type of thing. We can support that policy that we've had and invigorate it and do other things as well, including transit-oriented development and other things. So, so to the degree that people want to spend any time today talking in general about this idea of adding an implementation action plan to the housing action report, love to hear from you. And then to the degree that there's anything specific that you love or hate on this or want to tweak, we could talk about it today, you could send me an email, just, you know, whatever works for you all. But I think we are on the clock to try to get this done by July 26th so that we can start implementing what we can, even though many of the issues are plan commission issues unless we go the emergency ordinance route that Councilmember Cathcart mentioned, which, which is another option I haven't really explored. I'm not sure I understand yet that, but maybe we can get a presentation along the way, maybe at the same time as the data sets over what the law is from James Richman of emergency ordinance options and things like that, and what the pros and cons are. I mean, there's certainly a lot of pros to the process that we have that we typically use. Councilmember Canir?
So I think there's another element that we need to consider, and Maron touched on it, which is, in isolation, none of these things are going to be the panacea. They're not going to immediately change the landscape. They're in tandem, they're all designed to work together. We can't just do one thing and expect a miracle. But the other piece is, we are still having shortages of supply. We still have a skilled labor shortage, and we can't ignore that when we move forward with trying to create more housing. That's just the reality of the landscape, and we have no control over when that's going to end. So we can put all these in place, but I don't think we should have unrealistic expectations of what, what's going to happen next and that all of a sudden, there's going to be a transformation. Because until we solve those two things, or until those two things are solved, we're not going to be able to solve them, there's still going to be a lag and we're still going to have shortages.
Yep, thanks. Councilmember Cathcart? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you. And I completely agree. I mean, but I think we can get the landscape ready so that when, and hopefully, you know, commodity prices start to come down, maybe there's improvements in skilled labor, you know, we're, we're ready to go here in Spokane with, with whatever land use and housing reforms that we've implemented. And I wonder if there's opportunities for us to maybe coordinate better with the community colleges, you know, apprenticeship programs, even local high schools, to make sure that they have robust, even just shop classes, things that are encouraging, you know, younger folks to go into the trades and, and help to address that, that labor shortage. So there might be some roles that we could play in encouraging that. One other thing, though, that I think is, especially in light of, of recent days, that we should probably be thinking about, too, is how we could, and maybe it's with 1590 money, but how we could help to make some of our older housing stock a little bit more resilient, efficient, improving, you know, the, the low-efficiency HVAC systems that are in some of the, the older homes that are in our community, stuff like that, that really increase the draw on, on the energy infrastructure that caused some of the, the need for the rolling blackouts. And of course, we should be coordinating with Avista to try and see, you know, fortification of the infrastructure to make sure that it can, it can withstand, you know, heat like this going forward. But I think those are some pieces that, that might also make sense to include in, in something like this as well.
I put that in my incentives.
Okay. Other, other comments? I, you know, I'd like to remind people that the housing crisis that we're in the middle of, and it's at various price points, including homelessness, you know, at the, probably the most critical in terms of human life, but every step up, there seems to be a crisis until you get to the higher levels. Those are forces that are far beyond Spokane, and really, they went into place after the last housing recession when basically lumber mills shut down for good, people got out of the house building business, and all sorts of other things that just, we hit a tipping point really in the last year. And it was predictable, and people were saying it. But traditionally, cities have not been, well, government in general in this country doesn't build housing for the population like they do in Europe. And our market, our markets are just not working under the conditions. And now we're in the situation of, well, what levers can we pull as a city? And there are plenty to pull. And I'm really happy that it seems like people across the entire political spectrum are coming together, and I've just never seen it. So that's the silver lining for me, is I've got the home builders and Spokane Low Income Housing Commission spokespeople on exactly the same page. I've never seen that in my time in Spokane. And so that tells me that we can get something done. And I really appreciate the work that planning staff have done. They have worked so hard. And for, in planner, planner world, it has been lightning speed, I think, because planning world is usually much slower for all sorts of good reasons, but it's been lightning speed. We have options. We just need to use our political will and our money to move forward. So I'm super excited that we're doing that, and I'm hoping by the end of this month, the community will see that we have spoken clearly with, you know, $15 million or so along with it to really make it happen. So thanks for that. If people have comments, councilmembers, please email me and people from the community. If you're watching, you can find my emails and all of council emails on our council webpage. So I think that's it for Housing Action Plan for today. I'm going to have Melissa give us a, Morrison, give us an update in a moment. We had had two, two things scheduled that we had hoped to have administration staff on. One, we were going to get an update on real-time shelter capacity reporting. You might remember, we first heard about this in October, and it was going to go into place in November, and it's just for a variety of reasons, I'm not sure all of why. Some of it is that some of the shelters don't have the technology. And I'm hoping that in this next- don't have the technology. And I'm hoping that in this next round of shelter funding, we will give them the technology so that they can do that. And then there's some other things as, as well. But, um, we were supposed to get a presentation from CHHS staff with Melissa today on that, but I heard yesterday from, uh, the city administrator that, um, no one's available to do that. You might know they're understaffed by six or seven people. Then the other topic was not so long planned, but since we just approved, um, $9 million in rental assistance on Monday, I was hoping to get a five-minute report on how much rental assistance has been distributed under contract out there, and who are the contractors, so people know where they can go. Uh, you know, the eviction moratorium ended, uh, yesterday, and now there's kind of a, uh, bridge, uh, moratorium replacement, but all of it is premised on there being availability of rental assistance. Um, and so it'd be very helpful to have that. And again, the city administrator said he understood why we might want it, but he was not comfortable sending us any staff, um, because of their workload. And that brings up a whole nother issue. Um, but I will go to Councilmember Stratton.
Not that I want to bring up a whole nother issue, but I, I don't think I'm alone at the table here. I continue to get emails, calls from people in the community in need of resources, wanting to know, even landlords wanting to know where we're at with these programs to help tenants and landlords.
Yep.
So, I guess, I'm looking for a recommendation. When those come in, because we're not getting the updates that they were, that we're requesting, do I go ahead and forward those to the city administrator and have the administration answer those phone calls and emails? I'm just asking, because I know I'm not the only one here that's a little frustrated by this.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I join you in that frustration, and it seems to me that a five-minute update isn't going to tax staff too much. And I, it's not staff that we should be pointing fingers at, really. It's very frustrating. And what is actually happening, our, our community members are suffering, and they don't have that certainty of, do, am I going to get some rental relief? The landlords don't have that certainty if they're going to get paid. And I don't think that perhaps the administration understands the severity of this. I'm just, it just doesn't seem so. It's very frustrating, and I'm wondering if we could just agree on a course of action, like, okay, all of this is going to go to city administrator or to the mayor. I don't think it would be fair of us to further burden the CHHS department.
I very appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm just really frustrated by this.
Staff has been great, and I want to point out that Margaret Hinson, um, with CHHS has been somebody that I've relied on, but I've sent her a lot. So, um, yeah, I, I agree with you. Staff has been great. This isn't, they're kind of stuck in the middle, but I'll shut up.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I think it's important enough that we should have not just an update occasionally. I would like real-time data, and I don't see why we can't just set up some sort of a Tableau dashboard that we could have access to, that would contain all this information, and it'd just be a requirement of the providers that are, are, you know, releasing the, the, doing the rental assistance work, to just keep that updated as they, you know, as they, uh, complete their work with a client, they update that information at the database, and we can all see it in a, in a somewhat real-time format. Uh, I, I think it's worth it, and if we need to maybe put a, a IT person, you know, part-time on that to get it set up, I, I think it's worth doing something like that to make sure that we have access to this, to this much-needed information.
Yep. Yes, Mr. McClatchy.
Thank you, Council President. I just have one, uh, suggestion and request, that if, if and when information or, uh, requests for information come in from members of the public, if we could sort of collect those with Melissa, either as you, either send them to her or CC them when you're sending them to the staffer, however you choose to do that, I think, just so that we can internally track what we're hearing, and we can collect them, and build a better sense of what the more important questions are that we need to answer. So it's just a request from me, so we stay sort of aligned, uh, with council staff.
Yep. I, I agree with everything been said. Councilmember Cathcart, I, I like that idea. Um, one challenge of it is, I think we have now, all the, all the, most of the contracts for most of the rental assistance are signed, and it probably doesn't include that requirement, but that doesn't preclude us from going to them and saying, hey, we'll do the IT thing, will you just update things in real time? Even weekly would be fine. So we can, we can explore that. Um, we just, we're going to need cooperation, and, um, it's, it's frustrating. You know, the city charter says that city council is entitled to updates from any staff at any time. Uh, we're not allowed to direct staff, but we're allowed to get the information, because we obviously need it in order to do our work. And then the other thing is, city council can be great ambassadors out to the public of, of explaining what's going on. We have a different network, we're much closer, we're, uh, six of you are elected by district, and so we can really be a play. Now, the truth is that a lot of that information is out there generally, um, just going through what we've done on council. I don't have the individual contracts, but we did approve, um, $9 million on Monday. Uh, most of it was going to Live Stories, um, that previously has other contracts for rental assistance, and distributed our CARES Act money to, um, small businesses and nonprofits. Family Promise has a pretty good chunk of the latest money, several million going, um, to help families with rental assistance. Um, we, a couple of weeks ago, maybe two or three weeks ago, we approved $2 million to Better Health Together to distribute some rental assistance money. And then around June 1st, we, um, approved contracts for $6 million, again, most of it to Live Stories, some of it to, um, Family Promise on the same basis. And then we also spent some of that money on, uh, the Carl Maxi Center, uh, to be focused on, um, uh, communities that might be marginalized based on their race or culture. Uh, so I, you know, I think, I was counting that up, it's about $16 million, some of which has been out, out on the street. Obviously, the $9 million we just did is not on the street yet, but is getting ready. I'm not, I haven't gotten any reports, and this is where Councilmember Cathcart's comment's so important. We don't know how much of the $6 million on June 1st that we approved has been out there. Um, we, we just don't know. We did get some clarification from the governor that essentially, uh, people are not going to be evicted as long as they have applied for rental assistance. Um, and so the fact that it will take a long time doesn't mean that puts them at risk for being evicted. Uh, but they obviously have anxiety. We heard a story at council about someone that was so anxious that they paid money that they didn't have, and then now they can't necessarily get it. Landlords who've waited, uh, over a year to be paid, obviously anxious as well. So we're trying to work through that. I'm not sure exactly the story on the administration of why there's so many vacancies and why they haven't been filled. Um, I've asked for a report on that. How many open budgeted positions are there? Uh, how long have they been vacant? Uh, when was the request to HR or civil service made to fill them? Where are we in the process? Um, I didn't get a response to that, even a response to that request yet, so hope, hope to do that. Um, it's very hard to manage the management, because that's not in our purview under the charter, except indirectly by budget issues. So I'm, I've scheduled a conversation with city administrator next week to have a long conversation about how we can improve all of this, including information sharing, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll work out something. But I don't want to minimize the concern, and it does get in the way. Um, but with that, Melissa Morrison, if you're still there, I'd love to invite you to give us any update you might have on the topics that we had hoped to discuss today but aren't able to. If I see you currently.
Yeah, so I don't have anything very formal, but I did reach out, um, to find out from some different community members around the rental assistance, um, what they've been, you know, experiencing or hearing, kind of just in an anecdotal sense, to provide some feedback to council. Um, one thing that I heard is that, you know, there is some frustration that the county has a lot of rental assistance money right now that has not been spent. Um, so they're pretty flush with rental assistance money, um, while the city is struggling to, um, meet the need of people living inside the city. So if you are a county resident living outside city limits, um, there seems to be plenty of funding, but if you're someone living inside city limits, um, funding is stretched a bit thin. So, um, the, um, the other thing that I heard from the, um, some of the community members is, the landlord association right now is estimating that they have about 2,000 units, um, that has not been able to receive rental assistance. Um, and their, their average, um, rental arrears is about $5,500. Um, so that's kind of inside the city of Spokane. That's what, you know, um, surveying their membership, that's what they're seeing right now. They saw, you know, kind of a big jump in the number of folks with rental arrears with the two-and-a-half-month delay of getting the next rental funds out for the city of Spokane. Um, so they saw a pretty, a high rate of increase on that. Um, they've, you know, heard about the money coming after the fourth. Um, there was some frustration that, you know, the Live Spokane, um, they ran out of money in about 10 days, um, with the first round of funding that went out. So, um, you know, there's some frustration of how quickly that went, um, and then seeing how much money is left in the county that, um, people in the city of Spokane and landlords can't access. Um, Councilmember Cathcart, question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do you have a sense of why there's such a discrepancy between county and city? I mean, I know, I, I could understand some level of discrepancy. There's probably just, you know, a higher percentage of, of renters in the city, but I, I would, it just seems like it's pretty, you know, very extreme. I'm just wondering if you have a sense of why that is.
Yeah, so, um, you know, some of the, the thoughts are that the, the money was allocated based on population, and, you know, it doesn't, it wasn't necessarily distributed on the percentage of households in poverty, or that might be under that 80% EMI. So the city of Spokane has the higher number of households under 80% area median income. Um, so they have a greater need, but that's not necessarily how the money had been allocated. So the county got a lot more funds, um, with not as many households that could, that can necessarily access it. Councilmember Stratton?
I don't know if this is a question for this group, or maybe it's the landlord-tenant group that meets, but have we, it seems to me, because I'm hearing the same thing from landlords, that, um, it's, it's been hard for them to, uh, they, I'll send information like, hey, here's who's got money right now for assistance, and by the time they call, the money's gone. Have we ever talked about, or has anybody done any research on why we can't allocate funds to the landlord association for some of those costs to their landlords? That it might just take away a barrier or two for them? Have we talked about that, or is that something we should look into?
My life.
I don't think we've talked about it.
Yep. They, Karen, I think they probably could apply. We, in, for all this money, this time, we did a RFP process, a competitive process, so anyone could apply to distribute it. And I don't, I don't think there was any restriction, because I'm, Live Stories is not a nonprofit, they're a for-profit company. So I think they could apply to do it, if they applied.
So I could share that information with them, because it just seems to me that they had some money that could help those immediate landlords that need help, like yesterday, that they would have some funding to do that. It might make it a little bit easier.
Yep. And I think there's, I'm not 100% sure, this is why I was hoping for a staff person, but I think there is going to be more money coming, at least at a minimum from the state. The state in the last budget approved, uh, very big chunk of rental assistance going forward. It's not really COVID-related, it's just, uh, going forward. So that's definitely a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kinnear.
This question's from Melissa. The county got X number of dollars. Is that for the unincorporated county? Because we are a part of the county. All the small, and, and the small cities are part of the county, so that must be for just unincorporated. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if city of Cheney, you know, if residents in some of the smaller cities can apply for the county funds, but I do know, like, on the application pages or, you know, like SNAP's page, it's, it's outside of the city limits of Spokane. So I'm assuming that means if you live in Airway Heights or Cheney, or, you know, Deer Park, you can apply through the county. Um, but yeah, and I do think there's been some conversations, at least from one stakeholder, of asking the county, can you, you know, can you share some of your funds, um, with residents inside the city of Spokane? So I think, um, some people are asking some of those questions.
Councilmember Wilkerson, I see your hand raised, if you want to unmute yourself, or, I'm not sure if you're muted yourself, but if you want to speak up.
Thank you. You know, I just also want to mention that the people who are doing this rental assistance are at capacity, because we've asked them to move a significant amount of money out the door in a very short window of time, as we are with the city with our own funding grants going out. Capacity has been the biggest challenge of getting this money out there. So that's not an excuse, I think it's their reality, and they're just trying to, uh, operate within what they have at this time. So, uh, a big shout-out to them for doing that work, because in Spokane, we do not have a lot of providers who took on this rental assistance challenge.
Okay. Uh, Melissa, anything, maybe not new information for us, but it may be more information that we have had, or maybe that we remember about real-time reporting. Maybe just kind of tell us what's going on, on that, and maybe this isn't really, well, yeah, just go ahead and do that.
Yeah, so, um, the last little detail I had heard is, um, sorry, I have an echo. Let me see if I can turn off my speaker. Um, is that the, the beta testing had gone out, um, but, but CHHS wasn't getting real-time updates from the shelter providers, and so the, it seemed like a barrier was the shelters being able to have, you know, staff capacity to input the data, um, you know, on a, on a nightly, regular basis, because it takes, you know, a human to, to input a lot of that data when they're also trying to manage a shelter, and, you know, understaffed, and, you know, all of the logistics of working within that system. Um, and the other piece was, is a lot of shelters didn't have the, you know, infrastructure of the computers, um, to really do it in a very efficient way. Um, I know there's been some discussions in the past about using, um, some different kind of key cards or swipe-in systems, so a lot of that data that's being manually inputted and collected could just be automatic, um, and it wouldn't require so much, um, staff time to do a lot of the, the data entry. Um, I, I remember, and it wasn't specifically around this, um, conversation, but some of the, um, shelter providers, you know, they don't have the frontline staff to, to do some of this data entry because of, you know, their budgets. And so some of the senior management is doing a lot of the data entry as they have time. So just, you know, recognizing the, the need for, um, the infrastructure improvements in some of the shelters to help, you know, do some of the work that I think everyone agrees on needs to be done, it just is finding the capacity to do that. So, um, that is some of the, the feedback I've heard on the real-time shelters, that, you know, the testing really found that it wasn't getting the updates in the information that would have been, um, needed to really make a functional shelter dashboard, um, that would provide people with real-time data outward facing to the public. Um, so, you know, looking at the needs of possibly, you know, some funding to, um, update infrastructure citywide, so shelters can, can meet the, those requirements.
Yeah, and again, uh, we'll be starting to devote more time to uses for American Recovery Plan, but that's a good one-time kind of expense to just say, you know what? We'll spend the money for our preferred shelter providers to get them, um, you know, up to speed, and then each contract that we enter into, that's the other thing, it's not in their contract, so we have to put it in the contract, but we have to give them the resources to do it. And then we would do that. There are, there are also some, have been political arguments about not sharing it, which has been another obstacle, I think. So I'd like to get the technical thing and capacity out of the way, so we're just down to the politics of it. And I think most people agree, we should have real-time outwardly facing data. So, um, thanks for following that. Other comments on any of those topics? Councilmember Stratton?
One more quick question, Melissa, if you have an answer. So I'm making myself a note, I'm going to contact the landlord association, talk to them a little bit about, um, asking for some funding for- them a little bit about asking for some funding for landlord assistance. Do we know who the person in City Hall, I know Margaret's been helpful, but I don't think she's the main person that could provide them information, tell them what the process is, keep them posted on as they go through it. Do we know who that would be?
I don't know who that person is, would be right now. I mean, my point of contact right now with CHHS has been Kirsten Davis, the new, the interim deputy director. She might be the best point of contact, or David Lewis.
I'll start with Kirsten, thanks.
Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, Betsy, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say to Councilmember Stratton, that currently, we do not have a RFP process open, so that will be a challenge also, but when we start the American Recovery Funds, that will be an opportunity. But currently, there isn't one at this time. We could work on it, but it's not in place.
Right, but at least they can get the information in advance, so they know what to do when those funds become available.
So this is our last meeting for a little bit. We don't have any meetings, really, we don't have any meetings next week. I don't think we're doing study session next week. I'm looking at, oh, so that's not for sure yet. We're definitely not having any meetings on Monday, and Ms. Allers and I will chat about study session next week, and hopefully get that information to you soon, so you can plan accordingly. Please have a great holiday weekend, everybody, and take care of yourself, and you can take care of somebody else. We'll see you. It's great to see you, everyone. Be well.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.